And welcome to the July 18th Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. Thank you all for being here at this time. I'd like to ask Mr. Wayne Berry if he'd come forward and give us an invocation. Mr. Berry, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Let us pray. God of time and space, God of human trust and longing, God of our parents and grandparents, God of our children and grandchildren, God of all kindness and mercy. Thank you for this time when citizens and citizen leaders come together to share and discuss our needs and concerns. Thank you for this time when we declare and celebrate Parks and Recreation Month and the success of our ongoing beach nourishment process. Thank you for the space that allows for the comfortable exchange of information. Thank you for these citizens who extend themselves to serve us as commissioners. Open their ears to hear the depth of our gratitude and our current need for their service. Open their minds to consider both the short and long-term implications of the solutions they discern. And open their hearts to consider the needs of the least among us to be as important as the needs of the more fortunate. Thank you, God, for citizen employees who seek perfection in their work and are recognized as employee of the month. Thank you for citizen volunteers who keep the contributions and the needs of our senior citizens before our eyes. Thank you for citizens who offer public comment, both good and bad, for it is only through hearing both that we are able to identify our gifts and shortcomings as a community. Be with our commissioners as they make decisions about flexible work schedules and teleworking possibilities for county employees. Be with them as they consider capital projects surrounding flood mitigation. And be with them as they make critical decisions about essential housing and projections for general fund use over the next five years. Be with our business community. Be with our police, rescue, and hospital personnel. Be with our lifeguards, our mental health professionals, our visitors, and newest residents. In your benevolence and love, ease the pain of those who are suffering loss. Encourage those who are feeling helpless or hopeless. Inspire the hearts of all who are faltering. Finally, inspire us to act our appreciation for you through our actions of kindness and love toward each other. In your holy and glorious name that transcends all others, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no other, just as God.
County manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. Just have one item to go over tonight. And boy, what a special occasion this is this evening. The Dare County Board of Commissioners, our board, would like to recognize and congratulate the team members and coaches of two of our local softball teams that won the state championship last month. Two, let me repeat that, two of our teams won the state championship. That's incredible. This Board of Commissioners is very, very proud of our young children in our community and that we want to take this time to recognize them. This is a Babe Ruth softball. It consists of young ladies between the ages of six and 12. The league has three ages and divisions. There's an eight and under, there's a 10 and under, and there is a 12 and under. All of these players live in Dare County and attend Dare County schools. And I see future COA students among these groups of young ladies. This year, there were a total of nine teams in the league. And then, once the season is over, the best players are chosen to represent the league in Dare County at the Babe Ruth All-Star Tournament. All three age groups attended the state tournament this year. As they represented the league and the county in extraordinary fashion, the 10 and under team came in fourth place, then eight and under team, and the 12 and under team both won the state championships. The Babe Ruth All-Star Tournament was held between June 25th and June 29th in Havelock, North Carolina. And the two teams, the eight under and the 12 under teams, certainly delivered incredible performances and truly made Dare County, along with this Board of Commissioners, extremely proud. The eight under team defeated Jamesville at the championship. Now, listen to this score, 14 to 3. And the 12 and under team won, listen to this score, 10 to 1 in victory over New Bern. I think, I think those teams that they played took a pretty good whipping, look at, listen to the score. And folks, this is really, this is a big accomplishment because no softball team, now you heard me, you heard me, no softball team from Dare County has ever won a state championship. And we got two. These young ladies are truly remarkable and the amount of hours that they put in and practiced clearly certainly paid off. I want to commend them, as well as the Board of Commissioners, and their coaches and assistant coaches. And this evening, on behalf of Dare County Board of Commissioners, for their excellence in sportsmanship, dedication, and this remarkable accomplishment that reflects so positively on our community. So at this time, I'm going to come down and I'd like to take a couple of minutes to tell you a little bit more about each of those two state championship teams, that eight under and 12 and under teams. So I'm going to come down and I'm going to, I'm going to tell you a little bit more about the eight and under team. And then, we're going to have some photos and then I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners to join us in those photos along with those coaches. So let me take a minute to walk down front. Boy, look at this group of young ladies. Boy, I tell you, all smiles on their face with all those medals around their neck. That's pretty cool. The eight and under girls finished, now listen to this, with a record of seven wins and no losses. For the, that's for the tournament. And from the beginning to the end of the tournament, their gloves and bats were certainly on full display. You heard the score, 14 to 3. Anytime they were faced with any adversity, they overcame that adversity and the championship was, was a total team effort. It took all 11 girls on that team to win this. And let me recognize each one of them individually. Leila Gibbs, Leila's here? Leila, come on up here with me, if you don't mind. Where's Brooke? Brooke Bland? Brooke, come on up here. How about Ms. McCleesh? Karai, come on up here, Ms. McCleesh. Malaya Simmons? Ms. Simmons, come on up here. Hadley White? Where's Hadley? There's Hadley. Aubrey Berry? Is she here? Okay, sorry she couldn't make it. How about Jaden Balance? Where's Jaden? Come on up, Jaden. Emily Brody? Emily? Now, check Ms. Brody out. Guess what she was? She was the MVP at a tournament.
All right.
Yes, sir. All right. Tell me something. How about Ms. Huntingford? Ms. Maddie Huntingford? Sophie? Where's Sophie? She's not here either. How about Cora Graham? That's the Cora sitting there. Come on up here, Cora. Now guess who the head coach is? David White. David, come on up here. David, the old man taught you pretty good. He, you know, he, he, he used to coach, you know? He's the head of our, he's the head of our Parks and Rec. Wonder how he feels about being assistant coach now? He's assistant coach, come on up here, Tim. David actually works in, in our tax appraisal office. Hope my name's not on one of those that's delinquent. But, Tim's, Tim's assistant coach and Chris, Chris Bland, where's Chris? Chris is, helps out with him? How about Judd, Judd Beatty? Judd? Oh goodness, I hope everything goes well. Now folks, ain't this some nice looking young ladies up here? I think if you stood the bat on in, it might be taller than some of them are. So I'm sure they had to choke up on the bat a little bit though, didn't you? I tell you what, y'all knocked 14 runs in, that's pretty dang on good, isn't it? We're so proud of them. I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners, come on down here, let's, let's take a pretty, a picture of this fine, outstanding looking group. Y'all come on in here together, ladies. No, we're going to go, we're going to, listen, we listened to the photographer, we got to go back here.
I put the commissioners in the back.
Give me five, guys. Congratulations. Thank you, David. Good job, though. That's pretty awesome, isn't it? Yeah. State championship, never happened there before, and we got two of them. And that's, that's very impressive, very proud. And I was serious, girls. These guys back here, $250,000 a year that we give out for scholarships so you can go to COA and get your associate's degree, or if you want to go to tech school, you can get that. Tell your mom and daddy, you don't want to go to a four-year school to start out with. You want to go to COA and save them a ton of money the first two years. That's why we built an $18 million campus over here in Maniow, so take advantage of it. I'm, I got your names right here, so I'm going to be bugging you when it comes time for that. Let's talk about the 12 and under. Another fantastic group of young ladies. A little bit taller, two years older, but fantastic, 10 to 1. Y'all, 11, oh, oh, excuse me. 11 to 1, my, my bad, my bad. Somebody gave me the wrong info. Was any of that a home run? Wow, wow. Who's the big hitter? Come on, hit, raise your hand, look at him. Wow, was any, was, was, was the bases loaded in any of the cases? Must have been if it was 11 to 1. Let's talk about these young ladies. They finished with a record of 7-0, just like our eight and under. The girls, they were overwhelmed the other teams with, with speed and placement of pitches. Who's, who's the pitcher? Oh gosh, you got four pitchers. I should have known that. They breezed through most of the tournament, even winning their championship game with 11 runs. Thank you for correcting me on that. Let's, let's bring you young ladies up here individually and recognize y'all as well. So, Ms. McKenzie Dexter? Come on up here, McKenzie. Congratulations. Super. How about Avery Winslow? Congratulations, Avery. I think we got some high school talent getting ready to come on board here, don't y'all? How about, how about Jazz Cooper? Madison? Where's Madison Adams? Ms. Jade Flowers? Where's Ms. Jade? Lilly, and I apologize, where's Lilly? How do you pronounce your last name? Oh, the one with C-A-S? Cassius? Cassius? Is that how you pronounce it? Come on up. Now we'll have Ms. Scarborough, Ms. Lilly Scarborough. Adlin Westcott, Ms. Westcott. How about Bella Huntingford? Is your sister on the eight and under? All right. Look at her. Look at her. I can recognize names occasionally.
Well done, Mr. Chairman.
And Rihanna Bateman? Not here? Any relationship, uh, urban?
Unfortunately, no.
Now, I'll show you my ignorance, ladies, but is this slow pitch or fast pitch? Is that when y'all do this? Oh my God. Have y'all seen, yeah, I know y'all have seen all of that. I can't, it's faster than some of these pro bike guys on professional baseball that you see pitching. It's unbelievable to watch these girls wind up and throw that ball. I, I played baseball in high school and Little League and everything and I was fortunate enough to go to Lewisburg Junior College and play for them, but I partied too much, so they asked me to take a sabbatical. And I wasn't home two weeks and London Johnson needed my services, so don't, that's, that's the history of my baseball, but.
Hey Chairman Woodard, there's one more player we haven't called.
Oh, who did I miss? Why didn't you say something, honey? It's not on the list. Sugar, you come up here, I am so sorry. I am so sorry. Again, 11 to 1 instead of 10 and 1, and then I leave out a young lady. That, that's, that's embarrassing. That's embarrassing.
The coach is kidding.
Well, that's true, you're right. It is always the coach's fault. This is, this really is, I mean, I'm, I'm really taken by these young ladies and their accomplishments with, and I, and I keep repeating myself, but two state championships out of Dare County, it has never happened before with eight and under and 12 and under. It's just, I can see, I can see, I, I need to follow this more closely, when y'all are in, what, what grade are y'all in, like? So, so give it a couple of years, couple, three years, and this is our future teams in Dare County for the high schools. This is incredible. So, listen, I'm going to challenge you, we need some high school championships, state championships, once y'all get up there, if you can do it on this level, I know you can do it on that level. Guys, come on down, let's celebrate these young.
Do you have the coaches? The coaches?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I, I got to get to coaches. I got to get to coaches. Ricky Scarborough, that's Ricky. Ricky, Ricky's his coach. And then he's got some assistants, Melissa Gray. Is Lillian Arnold here? There she is. How about Henry? Henry Drake, is Henry here? There you go. Coaches, y'all better look at it, then I will sign y'all some contracts here for along all the, all this championship stuff here. Let's take some photos of these ladies. Left, thought off the list. Embarrassed the heck out of them. Wow, that's awesome.
That's pretty awesome to have that kind of talent with our young ladies in our community. And I tell you what, as a citizen, it really makes you proud to see young ladies participate in sports like that and, and be such, be as successful as they are, really, really makes you proud. So I was so happy that they were all able to be here this evening so our board could recognize them. So, once again, hats off to both of those teams. County manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item two on the agenda, and it's our recognition for our service pins for July 1st. Tonight, we have Sandy Pace. Sandy Pace is our, our Tillot Center Director, and she'll be receiving her 25-year pin from
Hello, Sandy.
Good evening.
Tim, Sandy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. If it's all right, I would like to invite Sandy's husband, Russ, up here.
Absolutely, absolutely. Behind every good woman is a good man.
Yeah. It's all the way around.
I don't get a chance to say that often, just don't, just don't mess it up.
Yeah, Russ told me earlier, he was glad we were having this meeting, he liked that this is one of those few times he gets to see Sandy. But I told him, well, you're going to have to wait another five years before this happens again, so. I think everybody up here knows who Sandy is. Sandy came to work for the county on July 1st, 1997, as a transportation coordinator with the Pheasant Center. In August of 1999, she was promoted to an activity specialist with the Parks and Rec Department at the Pheasant Center. In June 2005, she was promoted to a leisure program supervisor at the Pheasant Center. And then in 2008, we were fortunate enough and lucky enough to promote her to the community center manager at the Virginia Tillot Community Center. If you know Sandy, she is always on the move. She is a high-energy person with great enthusiasm and a strong uplifting personality. She is sensitive, a young woman of humor and responsiveness. Sandy keeps her eye on her goals, is a positive influence on those around her, and is at the same time calm and confident. I wanted to go ahead and list. I wanted to go ahead and list some of the accomplishments that she's done since she's been at the center for the last 11 years, right?
13.
13, excuse me. 13 years.
13 in October.
13 in October. As I said, she's always on the move, she's always on, on the move, and she keeps her goals in mind. And so here are some of her and her staff's accomplishments. Sandy and her staff started the first Walk of the Mine in Alzheimer's Walk. She started the Dare to Scare 5K Sweet Tweet Fun Run, which is a fundraiser that they use to buy unnecessary equipment and things like that for the Virginia Tillot Community Center. She is the chair for the North Carolina Senior Center Alliance, Senior Center Alliance. There are 63 senior centers of alliance, excuse me, of excellence in the state of North Carolina. There are two senior centers of excellence in the Alamo Commission area, which covers 10, 10 counties. And we are one of two of them. In fact, we're not certain, the other one is still a center of excellence. So, we're gonna say we're the only one in the Alamo Commission area.
We're the best one.
Well, that's, there's no doubt about that. She started the first Autism Awareness Walk. Started the first Virginia Tillot Community Center Toy Drive, which serves 400 children, 400 children at Christmas time. Started the first ALS Walk in memory of Mr. Sneed. Well, Mr. Sneed, if you're from, if you've been here very long, used to be the only individual that would issue driver's licenses, I think in the whole, in the whole county. I know up here, he was the only one that did it. So, he passed away a few years ago. Um, he visited the center just about every day, and, um, so she started a walk in his honor and raised money for ALS, and every year she donates money to the ALS.
He wasn't as scary there as he was at the DMV.
You're right. He was tough.
She started the first social club for seniors, especially during COVID. You know, the seniors didn't have any communication among each other, so she started the first social club for those, and we, and we've continued to do it since then. She's a coordinator for Special Olympics. This is the one thing that I'm proud that she's, she's started, and it's been a big, big success. She started trips out of town for the first time years ago, which have been to, up to the northeastern states like New York, Connecticut, uh, I think Philadelphia. Uh, she's been out on the west coast, to California, Colorado, Arizona, I don't know, I don't know where else. But the most impressive part about these trips is that she's taken people out of the country, um, four different times, actually five different times, and it's 60 to 70 people. So, can you imagine taking 60 to 70 people? Some people she's met for the first time when they got on the bus, um, out of the country. And they visited things like, they took two Viking cruises down the Rhine River. They've been to Ireland. They've been to Iceland. They've taken Mediterranean cruises, and with more of these to come. And she just received the AARP Award, which I would like to read because I just got the information about it actually today. So this is a letter that the AARP sent to Sandy. Sandy, I am writing you, I'm writing to inform you that you've been honored with the AARP slash North Carolina Coastal Community Leadership Award, uh, Leadership, Community Leadership Award, to be given at our Evening of Inspiration Awards, September the 9th, 2002, 2022. Ooh, better learn how to read. This award recognizes the contributions of community-minded recipients who demonstrate service and social impact at the highest level. This event will be held at Cape Fear Community College's Union Station in the Daniels Room. The event begins at 5:30 PM. I'm gonna, I'm gonna damage this name, but Kathy Wizard, Wizard Sax, Wissisakis nominated you in this category because you exemplify AARP's vision and purpose. You have shown to be dedicated to empowering Americans 50 and older in how and where they choose to live as they age. As you know, AARP works to strengthen communities and advocates for what matters mostly families with a focus on health, security, financial stability, and personal fulfillment. You are an inspiration for all of us who live and work in North Carolina's coastal region. On behalf of myself and the coastal region volunteers, thank you for all you do, and a most heartfelt congratulations. Sincerely, Rosa Lee Carrico. And as you can see, we, we have a, we have a jewel in Sandy Pace, no doubt about it. And I was fortunate enough to sit down with Terry Wheeler and choose her as the, our director at the Virginia Tillot Community Center, I guess about 14 years ago. We couldn't have a better leader for the Virginia Tillot Community Center, and I would like to present you with your 25-year pin. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. I feel very blessed to have the job that I have and very fortunate to have been here for as long as I have. So, thank you for the opportunity, and, um, I enjoy what I do and love serving the people in our community.
Sandy, before you go.
Yes.
I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have the privilege to sit on that board at the Tillot Center with Sandy and her team and other board members. And I'm listening to Ray go down the list of accomplishments, achievements, recognitions, awards, and it just reminded me of a song, uh, the title of which was Tina Turner's, actually, way back in 1989. Simply the Best. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for what you do.
Next, we have Sally Helms. She's a senior social worker with DSS, and she'll be receiving her 15-year pin from Chuck Lissette.
Good evening. Uh, this is Sally Helms. Uh, she's our foster care supervisor in Child Welfare at Social Services. She's not only a foster care supervisor, but she also supervises foster care 18 to 21, or foster home licensing, and also our adoption assistance, uh, or adoption program. And as one of her other assigned duties, she's also responsible for managing all of our agency vehicles. She joined the foster care, uh, unit in 2007, and five years ago, she was promoted to supervisor. Previously, she was employed in Mecklenburg as a foster care worker, and then came, uh, returned back to Dare County as a guardian at Lydham for the Judicial District. Uh, Sally is a lifelong resident of Dare County. Um, her husband Brandon and her son are also, uh, here in Mania with her. Uh, she's dedicated to child welfare and the safety and well-being of children. She ensures their medical, mental health, and well-being needs are addressed. Children are enrolled, enrolled in school and progressing, and their basic needs of food, clothing, and shelter are met each day. On any given day, Sally's tracking her staff and the number of children we have in the county as they move either within the county or outside of the county. Uh, her staff are on the road quite often, uh, visiting foster homes and treatment centers throughout, uh, the state of North Carolina. Sally's adopted a philosophy that she wants to make sure that all children who are in foster care receive all of the services and resources they need before they're reunified with their, uh, families, or with their parents, or before they are adopted. And as a result of that work, um, we're going on more than five years of not, of no foster children being returned to the system once they've been adopted or reunified with their, uh, parents. So, uh, Sally, congratulations for all the work you do. I would say we look forward to 15 more years, but I'm thinking it's probably more like 20 with her. So, thank you.
That's well. I have time in Mecklenburg, remember? Thank you all.
Next, we have Felicia Norman, an income maintenance supervisor with DSS, and she'll be receiving her 15-year pin from Wheeler Spencer.
Welcome, lady.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioners. Before I recognize Felicia, I also want to recognize and ask her daughter Erica to come up. Now, you're talking about a superstar sports person. Erica is a senior at Mania High School, and she plays every sport there is, basketball, softball, volleyball, and soccer.
Oh my God.
So, she is the all-around, so.
So, she's a senior?
She's a senior this coming year.
So, where's she going to school next?
COA.
COA? Does the word free sound familiar to you?
So, with that being said, I'm gonna read a little bit about Felicia. Felicia Norman is a proud mother of two children. She is their biggest cheerleader, and if she is not at work, you can catch her at their sporting events cheering them on. Felicia was hired on July the 2nd of 2007 as a processing assistant. Felicia was promoted on February 15th of 2008 to an income maintenance caseworker. Felicia was awarded another promotion on March the 5th, 2012, to an income maintenance investigator, where she remained there until 2016. Felicia then became the Economic Services Trainer on April the 25th, 2016. She then switched to the Food Nutrition Services, Work First, Family Assistance, and Foster Care and Adoption Trainer as the Economic Services Trainer Unit was expanded. On April the 24th of 2021, she became the supervisor of our Food Nutrition Services, Work First, Family Assistance, and Foster Care and Adoption Medicaid. Felicia has been a vital asset to the Economic Services Unit for now 15, over 15 years with social services. Felicia has a wealth of knowledge in the programs that she supervises. Felicia is a great leader who is always smiling or laughing, willing to help out anywhere she's needed. She brings great energy to our Economic Services Unit, and fingers crossed, we hope that Felicia will maintain this role for another 15 years. Congratulations, Felicia, for a well-deserved recognition.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wanda McMahon. She's here to get her 20-year pin from Sue Hewitt. Wanda's a community health technician with DSS.
I believe this is DSS month, with all these, all these, all these special, uh, numbers of years of service. Welcome, lady.
It's a good place to be. Thank y'all for having us this afternoon. Um, I don't even know where to start. Area Home Aid Program is one of the few that you'll find on the eastern North Carolina coastlines. Uh, we serve anywhere from 68 to 110 clients, which is residents of Dare County, from Hatteras to southern shores, to Mans Harbor, to Eastlake, to Stumpy Point. We serve all the county residents here. It's a program that, me not living here in Dare County, but I feel like I'm a part of Dare County because I've been here so long myself, I tell people every day, you guys are a lucky group to have this program in Dare County. The citizens have benefited greatly from it. Wanda has been here for the 20 years. Don't cry. Stop, stop. Don't stop.
I'm not crying, what else?
Wanda's, she is a member of your area here. She's got a daughter and three grandchildren, and they're wonderful. They grew up with me. I feel like I'm part granny to her grannies. But, um, Wanda's very special as she's wanted a few people I can say go to Hatteras Island. Right now, we're short three CNA's, Certified Nurses Assistance, Hatteras Island's being one of our places. Right now, we have three staff from Mania driving down to Hatteras Island. Wanda drives the most, and anytime she's got to fill in for one of the other two, she says, let me have the schedule. She never asks, she never, barter's this afternoon, she almost didn't make it here because of traffic from Hatteras Island. So today was her day down there. She don't know how much I appreciate her willingness to go down and serve the people down in Hatteras and all over Dare County, because this is a program, and I tell people when I hire them, it's a program you got to work with from your heart. It's not all the book knowledge you can get, it's not all the dollars and cents you can get, it's got to be a job you love to do, and Wanda does. She loves the people of Dare County. And I think the older and crabber you they are, the better she likes them. Because that's the one she seems to get, and she always goes with it with a bang. Again, I just thank her, I thank you guys for continuing this program for Dare County, and I hope it'll continue for years and years to come. Again, we're short three CNA's, so I'm putting a plug in, and we're all sure, sure, and are in. So if anybody's looking for work, contact DSS because we're ready to hire. And Wanda will be here another 10 years because she can't leave. You gotta stay with me.
Next, we have Terry Sheehy. He's our deputy EMS director, and he's here to receive his 25-year pin from Chief Collins.
25 years.
Good evening. Well, while he may not be a native here, um, he did go to high school here and graduated from Mania High School, where he actually took his first EMT class through the high school program, and that hooked him. Um, so, we hired Terry as an EMT. He had his intermediate certification in 1999, his paramedic in 2003, and then he started climbing up through the ranks in the department. In 2006, he was promoted to lieutenant. 2014, to captain, deputy director in 2017. And so the last five years, he's been our operations deputy director, who oversees, um, the units and their day-to-day activities and running all those 911 calls, which he still loves to do and does with a great frequency. And since we didn't keep him busy enough, um, through the years, he also has 20 years as a volunteer firefighter with Kitty Hawk Fire and Rescue, and with 15 seasons with Kitty Hawk Ocean Rescue, where he was a lifeguard and also rose as their deputy director for Ocean Rescue with Kitty Hawk, too. So, he likes to keep a little busy. He's a, has a associate's degree from Davidson Community College and a bachelor's from Western Carolina, Go Cats. And he's working on his master's application now. Um, he also chairs our regional LEPC, um, group. Um, he does have a little bit of a passion for emergency management. Um, he builds a lot of relationships with our vendors that we deal with, and he's constantly working to make sure that we're staying up to date and with all the new technologies and information that's out there. One of the things that, um, is a huge passion for him is teaching. And what college do you teach for?
College of the Admiral and Wake Tech Community College.
But that would be COA first. But one of the things that Terry's been very instrumental doing is developing an EMS leadership course. Um, you know, EMS agencies need a lot of leadership training, and that's a huge void, um, within the EMS industry. And so currently, the North Carolina EMS administrators are looking at the course curriculum that, um, he has had a very strong hand in developing. It's EMS Officer 1 and 2, and they're looking at adopting that statewide. But we, he has been teaching that for COA, um, and also Wake Technical Community College now. Um, but, um, and it was Wake that actually, um, came out and recruited him to help, um, do some of the teaching within their community college also. So he's also got a state appointment where he's representing the eastern 28 counties and updating the mission plan and ambulance deployments during times of emergency. So any type of strike team deployments and things like that, they're working on updating the mission with that. So he's been very, very dedicated to his craft. Um, in his free time, he does enjoy traveling, spending time with his wife Tracy, who is here, um, his three daughters, and, uh, video games, but his big passion is trains. I can, I, when he's on vacation, I'll just get a, um, message from him, and it's a train going. and it's a train going by. And I know he's at a stop someplace on the side of the road, meeting people and seeing trains go by.
That's right.
So congratulations, Terry, on your 25 years. I think he's got many, many more left in him.
Real quick, I do just want to say that none of this would be possible without the support, the leadership, Chief Collins, that members of the board, Mr. Chairman and Mr. County Manager, without you and the citizens of our county. We have a lot of blessings that, as I travel the state and talk with others, that they don't have. So thank you for all that you're able to support and do for us.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome, Terry. Gentlemen, I would give a miss not to say that I've worked side by side with Terry. Terry and I have been in fires together and several other things. And I cannot express enough, we are very fortunate to have Terry as our deputy chief. And I would follow you in a fire from here on out. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, with that, we move on to the Employee of the Month, and I'd ask Tim White to come up and make that presentation.
Come on up here, Assistant Coach. Assistant Coach, come on up here.
He likes that.
I know he does. I know he does.
This is Acre Stiren. He's one of our Leisure Activity Coordinators at Rec Park. And he has some guests here that have been waiting to come in, I guess, for an hour, almost. His mom, Mary. His dad, Homer. Come on up here. Come on up here. Come on up here. His dad, Homer. His niece, Lila. And his nephew, Miller.
All right.
Okay. Acre came to work for the county in March 12th, 2018, as a part-time gym supervisor at Rec Park. Acre was hired permanently on October 5th, 2020 as a full-time Leisure Activity Coordinator at Family Recreation Park. It is with great pleasure to tell you about Acre. Acre is well-respected and loved by staff and the youth that attend the youth center at Rec Park. Acre has a unique skill of impartiality. He has the ability to listen to opposing views, taking in emotionally charged information while remaining calm and explaining the views of both parties. And that's a very important quality to have in parks and recreation, because we get a lot of confrontation with people who can't understand why we want them to do some of the things that we ask them to do. While being a part-time employee, Acre developed many relationships with the students who today come back for his advice. Acre always makes himself available where needed. Acre embodies those necessary inherent skills and ensures his success as a helping professional. During COVID, Acre thought outside the box and developed a Harry Potter quidditch for all ages. Does anybody know what quidditch is?
Yeah, I used to play in college.
Pardon?
I used to play in college, yeah. Yes, we've seen it. We've seen it.
I'll get him to explain what it is after the presentation, because I don't know what it is.
It's a lot.
This was a tremendous success during COVID, as attendance increased each week during COVID. Acre has a lot of confidence in himself. By this, I mean that during his time as a part-time employee, Acre applied for the position he now has. He was turned down by Charlotte and myself. However, we explained to Acre what was needed for him to fill the current position he has. Acre listened, developed the skills needed, and as a result, he was rewarded with the job he has today. Acre has a strong inner voice. This quality is also the source of his creative energy. Acre comes up with a lot of ideas outside the box, you know, the permanent basketball, volleyball-type things. And that's important to us, because not everybody is an athlete, and they want to do things besides athletic sports. Acre, I want to thank you for your four years with us. Everybody loves you. You've been with us four years, and because of the job performance, I would like to present you with the July 22nd Employee of the Month.
All right.
I was very much not expecting this. They did a very good job at keeping this from me today. But I am grateful. I'm grateful to have this job, and I have fun every day. And there's nothing more important than that, so.
Fantastic.
Thanks, guys.
Great job, ladies. Well done.
Chairman, I'm sure you've noticed Kellie's shirt. Before we move on to public comment, those of you who received an award, if you'll go right out through this door so that we can get a picture, please.
Bobby. Isn't that John Morris?
So my concern that our population has changed, girls are getting more involved as are boys. The boys' baseball has done fabulous. The boys' baseball has done just as well as the girls have this year. And for me, it's not a boy or a girl thing. It's the simple fact is, can there be a committee set aside for restricted funds? Maybe there is, maybe I'm ignorant and don't know any different. But can there be some kind of committee started for travel that us as coaches and people in the community would present to the board as to why we need the restricted funds and to how they can be allocated for academics and athletes? And I just am asking for consideration in that manner. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. And we'll certainly take a look at it as a board.
And this man does the time.
All right, Tim.
And even as an assistant coach.
Any other public comment this evening? Anybody else here for public comment? That, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment and we would move to item five. And this is the senior Tar Heel Legislature update, and we have Kay White here for that.
Kay, good to see you and welcome this evening.
Thank you. What a fun evening to be with you all. Didn't expect so many youths. So now we're going from the youth to us. But we're here finally to give your report after we've been able to meet in June. We thank you, Chairman Woodard, and all the Dare County Commissioners for supporting the work that we do. And it's so good to have Sue Kelly with me. She was appointed right before COVID came, so she was able to go one meeting. She replaced Mary Ellen Hawthorne, who you may know has moved to Ohio and is an assisted living there. So I'm so glad to have Sue with me today. This is my 10th year serving as your Dare County delegate, and I'm happy to report that I have been able to attend all the meetings. We do have three meetings per year typically in the Raleigh area. This particular meeting was changed to Clemmons. I never knew where Clemmons was, so I know a new town. But it is in, we ate dinner in Winston-Salem, I found out. So we call it Winston-Salem. But it was moved there because it was at the last minute, well, two months ago, decided it was safe to meet again, and it was too difficult to find hotel space at that point in the Raleigh area. And then there's a discussion that they're going to move it more centrally located, which means it's a farther trip from us on the East Coast. But it was more central for the people from the West Coast. So that's why we're not meeting in Raleigh all the time anymore. So when we got back together in June after our March meeting in 2020, it was the one that was canceled when COVID came upon us very suddenly and surprised all of us. So it took a few months for us to get ourselves organized to do virtual. I mean, we're not the youngest generation, so some of us could do Zoom and some could not. So we had some training sessions on Zoom, and I served on the executive committee for the Senior Tar Heel Legislature as a chair of a committee, legislative committee. So the executive committee started meeting virtually monthly. And then we had our first meeting of all the delegates, as many as we could get on Zoom, in March of the next year. So then we have had three virtual meetings prior to this one that we just attended. So it was interesting to get us all back together again. We had a lovely time in Clemmons, and we cheered the fact that we could be, learn all the new people that were on board and be sad about those who were no longer with us because they had passed during those three years. And then I wanted to tell you about the officers. Officers are on board for a two-year term. While we couldn't elect new officers by our bylaws, we hadn't started to meet virtually yet. But we did pass a bylaw exemption for that period of time so that we could have those same officers. They never got to serve. They were elected in October of 19, so they never really got to serve. So in October of 21, we were then meeting virtually and voted in the same officers. So we do have the same officers that are on that sheet in your notebooks that lists those officers. And the pro tem, who will be coming, the president of the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, is from Elizabeth City. And so we have one of our local people will be chairing that after his term. When he comes up, let's see, that was '21, so '23, he will be elected to that office. And let's see, some of the information that came from our meeting in June, Jesselyn Bridges talked to us about No Wrong Door State Court. She is the No Wrong Door State Coordinator for DAS, the Division of Aging and Adult Services. She explained that North Carolina had received a $35 million one-time funding grant for the next two and a half years from the American Rescue Plan Act earmarked for older adult support services administered by the North Carolina Division of Aging and Adult Services through the 16 Aire Agencies on Aging. This influx of additional funding has allowed more funding for a wide range of health and quality of life outcomes for our senior citizens. Funds will come to Dare County through the AAA office, through that home and community block grant. Catherine Lanyard, Elder Rights Section Chief of DAS, described several important programs administered by her unit. She emphasized that if a loved one has a relative in a long-term care facility, they should be very familiar with their ombudsman for the area. We don't have a lot of ombudsmen, and ombudsman would represent, like, we had one for 13 counties. And then the Dare County Committee would report to that person, would be supervised by them. As some of you may know, I served as chairman of that committee for eight years before you appointed me to the position I have now. So North Carolina has 90,000 long-term care beds with industry standards, saying that we should have one ombudsman for every 2,000 beds. So the state is now hiring an additional nine ombudsmens to try to meet that goal. Joyce Massey Smith, who is the Director of the North Carolina Division of Adult and Aging Services, spent most of the two-day session with us. In her remarks on June 13, she talked about the Governor Cooper's recommended budget for 2022 and '23, which had additional funding for many areas supporting the senior community, including expanding access to in-home special assistance by lifting the cap on the number of recipients and providing parity between in-home special assistance and adult care home facility rates. She also announced that North Carolina is one of 10 states chosen to participate in a learning collaborative to develop a state master plan on aging. DAS will be partnering with ARP to do that, and also the Public Health Service and Duke Endowment on a task force that is being run by the North Carolina Institute of Medicine to come up with recommendations in one year. So it's going to be exciting to see what comes out of that task group. Now, DAS has also received Medicaid funding to support a plan to work department-wide on issues of social isolation, loneliness, and suicide risk. The department is also training community leaders on assessing loneliness and suicide risk for the older adults. They have a new initiative called Bold North Carolina, Bold North Carolina, which is aimed at education and improving healthy brain practices. The long-term goal is around prevention of progression of Alzheimer's and related dementia. There is now a website provided free by the DAS, which is the North Carolina Department of Health and Aging, that helps caregivers learn skills to manage care called True Alta. Anyone can access that site at nc caregivers dot com slash login. I've been on that site myself, and it's very user-friendly. And it also has a support virtually for caregiver support group. It has really short, quick lessons, easy to follow. Between now and October, the delegates and alternates will submit proposals for possible legislation. Because we've had these for four years now, we just continued the same ones we'd had two years before that because we hadn't been able to meet. But we're doing, in the process of doing that now. And Sue will come before you now and share that work with you. Thank you for your time. It's always a pleasure to serve the citizens and you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sue Kelly. I'm a resident of Kill Devil Hills. And it's my privilege to serve as the alternate to the North Carolina State Tar Heel Legislature, Senior Tar Heel Legislature. It's also my privilege to work with this fine lady who just spoke to you. She has a long and outstanding history with the Tar Heel Legislature. One of the most significant things is that she recently served a term as the president of the Friends of the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature. So she knows what she's talking about. She's very involved, and it's a real pleasure to work with her. I'm going to be very brief. You know, we have an aging population, and as the years go by, all of these issues become more and more significant. So I'm pleased to say that of the five resolutions that the Senior Tar Heel Legislature has presented over the last several years, most of them have been acted upon to some extent. But when you really look at it, we're not asking for a whole lot of money for some of these areas. And we could use a lot more, and we hope that the folks in Raleigh will see the increasing need to relate to these things. Obviously, the pandemic had a big thing to do with it. And as Kay indicated, we've been looking at these resolutions for quite some time. So one of them, quickly to talk about, is the Carolina Home and Community Care Block Grant. And this is an attempt to provide funds for people who need home services. And we all know that that's really significant. A lot of people do. And there are people, and I believe some in our county, and we're pretty lucky in many ways in our county, but there are people that need home services, and it's not always available to them. So Raleigh did add some additional funding, but we asked for $8 million in recurring funds, and I don't believe they came up with that much money. Senior centers, we also asked for additional money for senior centers. It's hard to believe, since we in Dare have such great centers, with our two senior centers, Fessenden and Baum, and this wonderful Tillot Center, we're getting a lot of good work out of that. Not every county in this state has a senior center, which is kind of surprising. Most of them do. But the state tends to give money to some and not to others. Apparently, you can propagandize your center and maybe get a little bit of an in for some money. So we'd like to see some more money for all of these senior centers and the good work that they're doing. Also, there's a great project called Project Care, which is caregiver alternatives to running on empty. Now, this is for folks who are caregivers for people with Alzheimer's and other kinds of dementia. And it's in the news so much, we know what an issue that is. Sadly, it seems to be increasing. We're certainly hearing more and more about it. And I do believe the state did fund what was asked for in that area. Adult Protective Services is another one of the resolutions that the state Tar Heel Legislature has asked for, and we need more funding in that area. Staff-to-patient ratios in nursing homes, and by the way, you have a sheet in your packet on this that talks about these things, which is why I'm trying to keep it really short and as concise as I possibly can be. But staff-to-patient ratios in nursing homes, we all know what a difficulty it is regarding medical health people. So there are some states that are doing something about this, and we think that North Carolina could do more than they're doing. As Kay indicated, the Resolutions Committee for our region recently met. And again, thanks to Kay, we have presented two resolutions to be considered for upcoming. And one of them is this very important issue of expanding Medicaid in North Carolina, which I believe is under consideration by our General Assembly at this time. It's a lot of money. And most of the states, a majority, a clear majority of the states, have in fact responded to this. And we hope North Carolina will also. And the other resolution that we sent in for consideration has to do with encouraging people to take up medical health careers, and geriatrics in particular. So recently, you all have been dealing with this in a very major way. And so it's extremely, extremely important. I think that I just want to say that our region is actually the largest in physical land area. It's not the largest region in terms of numbers of people necessarily, but it is a big region. And we are actively working. It is our goal to see more people know what the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature is, what it does, and therefore able to help us influence our state legislature to do more for seniors. Anything that you can do to help us spread the word, to share the information, there's some flyers, you've got an example of that in your packet, please let us know what you can do and help us spread the word so that these issues can reach the goals that we've set. Thank you very much for your support. And if you have any quick questions, I'd be more than happy to take them. Otherwise, thank you very much for the time and the opportunity to share this information with you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you both for what you do for our seniors. It's very, very critical, and we appreciate everything you do.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to say one thing with the nursing home and assisted living homes. I serve as chairman for the Community Advisory Council on that, and they have not allowed us in those facilities for over two years because of COVID. And I'm happy to announce that on July 26, we will be going through to our training program to allow us to reenter those facilities. So it's been a long, long haul of not being able to do anything. It's been very frustrating, and I'm a bit excited about being able to get back to...
Has anyone else been allowed in these facilities in the last two years?
Nope.
Visitors, family, anybody?
I think family's allowed in now, but they've not allowed us in. So it's a step in the right direction.
That's true. Thank you.
More than family, guys. I've been visiting for months, and I have no official standing other than it's my father-in-law. So this restriction, it finds...
The state of emergency's been lifted, so hopefully that'll further this along.
Wait, let me sit down for that. Okay.
Yeah, and one of the things that certainly concerns me, and Sue brought it up, is certainly staffing issues. I've met with one just this week, and I won't mention which facility, but they're only operating at 70% of their bid capacity because they don't have the help. And that's critical. We need, I'm glad you all are pursuing, encouraging folks to get into that profession, because this is pretty critical. 70% of that facility, they've got patients that they could take, but they don't have the staff to support it. It's sad. It's sad.
It is. And anything we can all do toward improving that situation, we'll certainly try to do. It's a big issue. It's a long-term thing. Is it going to happen tomorrow?
I mean, my mother, I sensed that with my mother. She just passed away in February, but she was at both of the facilities that we have down here. In both situations, it was difficult to get the support that she needed while she was even in there. So thanks for what you do.
You're very welcome, and thank you for what you do. And let me just say, too, Kay lost her brother just a few days ago. I know you all would want to send your thoughts to her in condolence for this unexpected loss of her brother. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. Kay, we're so sorry to hear that. So thank you all. Bobby?
Sure, that brings us to item six on the agenda. This is a proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. Our Parks and Rec Director's still here, and Assistant Coach is still here. If you have questions, you can ask him, but I'll read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas parks and recreation are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Dare County, and whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas parks and recreation promote time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's disease, and whereas parks and recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, walking trails, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas parks and recreation programming and education activities, such as the after-school program, youth sports, and gardening programs, are critical to childhood development, and whereas parks and recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of a local tax base, increased tourism, and the attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and recreation are essential and adaptable infrastructures that make our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, or recreate outdoors, whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designed July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Dare County recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore Dare County does hereby proclaim and recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month, this the 18th day of July 2022."
Pleasure, the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner House and Couch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion?
Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, item six is a proposed flexible work schedule and teleworking policy. What you have in front of you is what came from our discussions at our workshops and during our budget concerning trying to create the opportunity for some flex scheduling. What you have there is in line with the discussions that we have. Elizabeth wrote and developed that, did the work on that. She used other communities that are doing similar things to help us design that. She has vetted it. I have read it. I've made some changes in it, and she's captured those changes. We have also vetted this with our staff, all of our department heads, and we've taken their feedback, included that in this as well. And so this is the policy that we're asking you to adopt. But we're also telling you that this may not be etched in stone. As we begin to use it and to operate it, and we find that we have problems that we need to fix or opportunities to make it better, then we'll come back to you and amend it. We also recognize this isn't going to impact all of our staff. There are some that can't do this, that won't work for what they do for us. There's others that don't have a place to do it. And so there are some reasons, and you can see the criteria in there, that would prevent the staff from doing it. This is an opportunity. It's not a right. It's not a privilege that everybody's guaranteed. But where we can make our workplace better and make it better for our employees, we're going to try to do that. And this is the first step towards getting to that. And should you approve that, then we'll start working on implementing it tomorrow.
Okay, I'll yield to the board and see if the board has any concerns or questions of this policy. Bobby, Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, just a couple, Bobby. Do we know, out of our total population, how many employees might be eligible for this? Elizabeth, you know?
We do not know. Just we were developing the policy, and then we were going to put it out, so the department heads will have information.
I'm just trying to get a feel. Is it 20? Is it 600?
No, I'd say maybe 100, 150.
So we're really about 20% of our population, 25%, 75% would not really fit for this. Do you guys foresee any potential issues with the other employees? That's what I'm trying to look for fairness here.
Well, yeah, and we've kicked that around, and we kicked that around with the department heads even before we came to you to ask to do this way back. And, you know, I think if you're in EMS, if you're a deputy sheriff, if you're...
Yeah, clearly.
...in those, and clearly they understand that if you're in public works, you know, there are some jobs that don't fit. And so the thought among us, HR, me, and our department heads, was let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. If there are departments that can't do it, then we understand that. But where we can do it and we can make a difference in some of our employees' lives, then we should try to do that, and the other employees, you know, have to understand that. And so our goal is to make it fair, to implement it across many departments as we can. But there are going to be those departments that by their nature, it can't be done. There's going to be people, because of their work habits or those kinds of things, can't do it at home while they might be eligible to. And so we just have to work through that as we go forward. And like I say, this isn't necessarily the permanent policy of the county. We're trying something for the first time to see if it works. And if it creates more havoc than what it does for the benefit of our people, then we have to change it, and we will.
And we did have two employees last week that resigned from social services, that if this policy was, I mean, they are leaving because they live an hour, an hour-plus away, and they need some type of teleworking policy. Now, this one is not, they, one of them, it wasn't going to necessarily work for them, but it was, they were very appreciative that this is being looked at.
And we haven't jumped in the deep end, because we don't allow 100% teleworking, and we don't, I mean, you got to be in the office at least three days a week.
Three days a week, yeah.
And so, you know, we're going to try this and see how it works. And if it works well like we think, then maybe to improve it, you come back, you don't have to be in the office two days a week. I don't know. The future, we'll have to see how it goes.
Yeah, the only other one I was curious about is the compressed schedule. Sort of the remote work, telework, and the flex schedule, I sort of understand that better. I was curious about the compressed schedule, whether you see that as something folks would gravitate to, or that might be only in rare situations.
I think people who can take advantage of working a four-day week, that's what you're talking about.
That's what I'm talking about, a four-day week.
Would probably take advantage of it. Where we, the way that we envision that is, the county is going to be open and running from 8:30 to 5:00 every day, five days a week. And, you know, if a department can do that, they've got to have enough staff on hand on a Friday or Monday or whatever day is the popular day that we can get it done. And...
That's my concern.
And also, we've made it where, or we will make it, where one employee can't have every Friday. So if you've got Friday this month, next month, you got to take a different day if you're going to use that. And then the department heads has to manage their production and be sure that the work is getting done in the time allocated. If you're doing your 37 hours, 37 and a half hours in a four-day week, then we've got to make sure we're getting 37 and a half hours of work in that four-day week, or we won't do that.
That's going to be difficult.
Well, we'll see. I'll tell you, during COVID, I'll use Dave's staff. Dave told me that his teleworking people who were not here five days a week were more productive than when they're here. Nobody interrupts them. Nobody comes in to talk to them. There's no chatting around the water cooler. You know, I walk in to give Dave something, and I speak to everybody in there, so they all have to stop. And so, you know, his department, as an example, was more productive. So I think I'm confident, I think Elizabeth's confident, this can work, and it's worked in a lot of other places. And so we'll just have to see.
Bobby, I got a question. So in talking to other counties and so forth, how they address the issue of the workers that... that cannot take off, please, public works?
Just like we have. They have implemented a policy very similar to this one. What we have is not something that Elizabeth and I made up. We
Combination.
proudly stole it from other places.
Shamelessly stole it.
Proudly, too.
That's how you got through law school.
That's right. And so, this is something that is done in other places. I have mentioned New Hanover a lot. The only reason I do is because my daughter-in-law works for New Hanover. They have done it. It's worked well. She loves it. She's a supervisor in DSS, and she and her staff do it. She says it works great. They like it, and they have the same potential issues, and she says it, as far as she knows, it hasn't been a problem in New Hanover.
And are there any other counties that maybe done some kind of compensation to those who cannot have a schedule like this, or are there any kind of creative?
So, the thought of compensating those that cannot is
Not compensating. I'm telling you, maybe
Well, if you've done that, well, everybody got, no, there's, I don't really know how we could do something for somebody who can't take advantage of a flexible schedule because of the profession that they chose to be in. Where it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And there's some flexibility built in their schedules that, I mean, if you're a police officer or an EMS person like that, they have some greater flexibilities in their schedules, in the way they work, in the hours that they work, in the shifts that they work that work in their advantage, and they get some other benefits that, you know, the other employees don't get because of the nature of their work. And so, you know, I think on balance, it works out, and, you know, where we can work it, we will.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chairman. The Vice Chairman moves to approve the policy and agreement that's been presented. Is there a second? Seconded then by Commissioner House and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Next on the agenda is the capital project ordinance for FEMA flood mitigation grant. We got a grant from FEMA to elevate 13 homes. This is a little bit different because this required matching funds. The other elevation programs that we've been in did not require matches, and we have a non-matching program in the works, but these didn't make that. We offered it to these individuals who were going to do that. We said that if they wanted to do that, they had to pay the match, that the county wasn't covering the match, and we've had those people, Dave's holding in escrow, their matches. And so, this is the cap, the capital project ordinance that allows us to move forward with that, and that, and you're authorizing me to sign to accept the grant so that we can move forward with those projects. And Dave, do we need a budget amendment or anything with that? Are we good to budget those funds?
The ordinance.
The ordinance does that, okay.
The ordinance, okay. So, you need a motion to approve the project ordinance and authorize the county manager to sign the flood mitigation assistant grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, moved. All right, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. It's been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
I've got a question on that one, too. Okay, so, the people who could not come up with 25% match, are they all medically put into the pool of the folks waiting to see if they could get 100%?
They were already in it to start with, because I think everybody applied for both, and so, it became a timing issue. I want to say that the people who were selected for the non-match have all been selected, and so, anybody who didn't make that has to wait for the next program. So, there's not, I think all of those have been used up.
Okay, do those people get priority over?
I don't, I think they reapply, and just like everybody else, the next time there's money available.
That's the way the program works, they reapply. Okay.
They're still waiting for the jury. That hasn't been decided. Everybody is not going to be
But all the money that we've got for those programs has now been allocated.
Okay.
Correct. Okay. And I didn't see you back there, Barton, but I was going to say it anyway. Barton has worked hard on this because we had some technical issues with the grant that, over the course of the last couple of months, he's worked through, and so, appreciate all your work on that, Barton. All right. That brings us down to item nine on the agenda, and that's the Barnhill preconstruction contract for the EMS and Masonic Lodge properties. You have that in front of you. I've reviewed that. Dustin's reviewed that. Dave's reviewed that, and we're comfortable to move forward with that.
I'd move to approve the preconstruction service contract and authorize county manager to sign.
All right, thank you, Commissioner House. It's been, motion's been made by Commissioner House, and there's a second?
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Is there a project ordinance in that as well?
It was included in what we emailed out.
Okay, I need, I need a motion to adopt the capital project ordinance for that as well.
So, moved. Okay, Commissioner Tobin has made that motion. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Then hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
That brings us to item 10, and this is a general fund five-year projection, and Dave's got that presentation for you.
Good evening, Dave.
Thank you. Good evening. As you know, it's in, it's in the board adopted financial policies that will do this every year, which is update a five-year projection for your general fund operating budget. It is one of those items that's a rating agency's checkbox that we do it and don't do it just to do it, but it does show some useful information. And, oh, well, let me, I'll continue on and catch up on the PowerPoint. The projection just is for your operating fund, so as you look at your budget, it's just for fund number 10. It starts with the 2023 budget, so it incorporates our new somewhat higher revenue projections and goes from there. I try to stay just in the data, and it uses a function in Excel for each revenue and expenditure category called sheet forecast, and what it does is it takes the timeline of data, and it'll project it out for the number of years that we tell it to, and it says that between the high point and the low bound, the high bound and the low bound, you'll be not, supposedly 95% of the time, you'll be within those bounds in your forecast. You get a forecast line, which is a least squares regression line, but then you get the bounds. What has happened with this one is that we had a lot of revenue volatility. We had COVID, and revenues went down, then CARES Act came in, and as soon as we opened back up, the county revenues went way up. We've seen an expenditure increase because of, you know, what we did in the 23 budget to address turnover and salaries. So, what's that, what that has resulted in is the bounds, the high and the low have gotten a lot wider because it's looking at data, it's going up and down and jumping everywhere, and it's going a little bit crazy. But the good news is, once it did the whole projection, and those sheets are in your agenda packet, although we can't get the PowerPoint up, but you don't, and what we're really after is you don't have a structural imbalance in your budget. As you look out five years in the future, it, the forecast line is pretty stable. It does show about $1 million a year. If everything stays exactly the same, you're going to use about $1 million a year of your fund balance to balance the budget. But under normal circumstances, we'll make expenditure adjustments, and that's, now, that's like less than probably 3/4 of 1% of your budget, that $1 million. So, those aren't that hard to do. The other thing it does show us is that in the high-growth assumption, expenditures are going to grow a lot more than revenue, and then in the low growth, you're going to have such a hit in revenue that those numbers are going to be worse, of course, than the forecast, kind of what we went through in 2007 through 13. So, you can, you know, either got to come up with revenue, or you got to cut expenditures, and no surprises there. Then the last thing I added for this year, Commissioner Ross got me to, in the capital investment fund model, we did all the debt service work so we could look out five years or more of what our projected debt service was going to be with the capital improvement plan. Now, we've taken those numbers and combined it with this projection to see what debt service as a percentage of your general fund budget is.
Extremely low.
That's important because those are pretty much fixed each year, and if you've got 25% of your budget dedicated to debt service and things go south, it's a whole lot harder to balance your budget than it is if you've only got 15%. 20% or less is what the agencies look for. 16% is very good. Ours came out to just about, starting at 12%, going up to 14 and 1/2 and 25, and then back down to 11% at the end of five years. So, that's another good set of news.
Yeah, that's excellent. That's, yeah, that's a very fiscally responsible, conservative position for us, guys. So, you, I mean, just listen to the news, and we give a nay for a five-minute period, and could we anticipate some rough times or potential for rough times? Yeah. I mean, who's seen 9% or 10% inflation in the last 40 years? You seen it, Duke? I haven't. So, good. That's well done, Dave. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And in all of those pages, the final budget document we posted on the webpage or the website, we've added these five-year projections to that document, so they're in that document.
Just for fun, Dave, I know you don't have this now, but at some point, if I could see, or you could see, when was this last done, this five-year projection? When was the last time we did a five-year?
Almost exactly a year ago.
Let's go back to the 2017 package. Right? Who wants to see the year 2022 as prepared and projected in 2017? I guess I'm the only one. I always, I love to do that, guys, because it illustrates, don't think we're that good. And this is not at all a criticism of Dave. Nobody, nobody is that good, and it's just an illustration of how we need to have the security of low percentages of our general fund in terms of debt service and other, if you would, shock absorbers to maintain stability in our county as we go forward. So, I'd love to see that if we go back to the 17.
I'll definitely do that.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
A class I had two weeks ago, the gentleman said, this isn't about making your projections right, it's about making them less wrong.
Yeah, he's right.
Making it less wrong. Less wrong. I like that.
It's five years ago, we had never heard of anything called COVID. Nobody knew anything about it, never heard of it. It was preposterous, and we were doing what we thought was best on this board, because we were, most of us, I think all of us were here, except maybe Irv, you might not have been here, but the rest of us were, and it would be fascinating to me to see what we said about what was going to happen.
It would be interesting.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, thank you, Dave.
So, that?
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Come back and see us.
On item 11, several meetings ago, you all authorized me to enter into a lease that was a short-term, one-year lease for the NC Works folks up here. And in the statute, as we were looking at it, it says that you all can authorize me to do leases of less than one year by doing a resolution so that for future leases that we need to renew, I don't have to come back to you to renew a one-year term. And so, this is that resolution authorizing me to enter into those one-year leases as we need to renew them.
Got you. Move to approve. Okay, it's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, item 12 is the essential housing update, and for the first time in a long time, I think I've got positive news for you.
Great.
It's been a struggle.
It has been, I'll tell you that we've got the two programs that we're going, I'll go with the smaller one first, the 100 units that we're doing with Wota Cooper. We have been working, I can't tell you how many hours we've put in to try to figure out how to make that legal under North Carolina statutes for us to spend $9 million to build affordable housing as a county. If we were a town or a city, there's a direct path. If we had a housing authority, there's a direct path.
Yeah, it's the housing.
But we're not any of those things, and so, the statutes that apply to us are so convoluted and unworkable that it's really difficult. At the beginning of last week, I thought we had it sorted out. We'd been back and forth with DFI. We'd been back and forth with Wota Cooper, and we thought we had all the details worked out. And on Wednesday of last week, another issue came up, and I've spent probably 75% of my time since then trying to figure that out. We engaged Parker Poe out of Charlotte, big law firm in Charlotte. They have a guy named Mac McCauley, who's, used to be the, was he the city attorney or the county attorney? The city attorney for the city of Charlotte. He does their affordable housing stuff, and so, he's been a big help. He and I talked last week. He's written me a memo that I got over the weekend. We went through that this morning. We went back to the School of Government this afternoon and went through that with them, and we now have a path forward. He's going to have me an opinion letter, and I think he just emailed it to me a minute ago, but I haven't read it yet, that gives us the path forward to get our $9 million in the hands of Wota Cooper so that they can build it. One of the things that we're going to have to do with them that I think is probably all right with you, I think you've said is all right before, but I want to be sure, is we have, it makes it fit easier if it's all Lytech. And so, what we're thinking is, is let's make those 100 units all Lytech, which are, you know, the income scale below 80%, 20%, and 60%, and whatever Lytech requires, and then use the big project where we have $35 million to hit a broader range because we don't have as many constraints on our money in that project, that we can get some income levels at higher incomes in those projects. And so, with your permission, what we want to do is add that all Lytech provision to the Wota Cooper. I've talked with them. They're okay with that. They're fine to do all Lytech. They were only proposing market rate because they thought we wanted some, but to make it work the way the statutes are, and the last hiccup was there was something that we, if you were going to use public funds, you had to have a referendum, and I said, a referendum is not possible for us to do that in a timely way. So, that is a way to avoid that referendum process. And so, that's where we are, and if you all tell me to move forward with that, you all have seen a draft of the contract. There may be some nits and some changes that I know that Rob and I went through and found a few, and we'll make those changes, and we'll make whatever changes are required in the memo that I received from Parker Poe to make it conform. But with that, it would be my intention to move forward with that contract with your approval, and to include in that, that it be 100% Lytech and take out that 120% AMI that was in that draft. Assuming that we do all that, I get with Wota Cooper, we work that out, then we'll have a final draft that you've given me authority to sign previously, but I just, I felt like you all needed to see it in the current form before I went forward. So,
Do you need a consensus or a motion?
So, I need a motion to move forward with the contract and the authority to make the amendments that the lawyers tell us we need to make, and that it be all Lytech properties instead of the 120% AMI.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to do so, and it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Floor is open for discussion. My discussion, my point would be, are you going to have to come back to us? My discussion, my point would be, are you going to have to come back to us in August for us to vote on this again before we have to move forward?
No, I what, I'm intending by this motion for you all to give me the authority to sign that contract and get going.
That's that's my understanding. But as soon as we do that, as soon as that's done, when is Wota Cooper going to start?
They're going to start the pre-development right. And so they've got that property under contract. They have to apply for that North Carolina housing grant. I talked to Danny Blackburn last week. They've already started that process, assuming that we would go forward. So they've already got that going. They have to wait and get that grant and get their money in place. We're using our money upfront, and so they're going to start the process with part of our money in the beginning while they wait on those grants.
Are we doing that fifty fifty upfront with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
So so when do we see dirt moved or something starting?
I can't tell you that.
Is that first of the year?
They can't, they, it has to be done by December of twenty three, I think, the the contract said.
Yeah, we talked about that as far as moving that up.
The Lytechs. I know.
That's one of the timing projects.
Right. So, yeah, but they had, I thought, I thought they.
They couldn't do anything.
I understand that, but I thought the deadline in order to get something in twenty twenty three was like.
It's September.
Is it in September? I thought it was, I think, in August, but.
Yeah.
All right, so we can meet.
So we're we're trying to, that's the whole point. We're trying to get them in the queue.
Let's ask them. Maybe Denise could give us that answer. When would we see dirt moved?
I could ask.
Yeah, let's just ask. Because I get asked that all the time. And I keep saying.
But but again, the the issue that that they have is now that we've got a deal, if you will.
Right.
All the timing is governed by somebody that's not us or them.
I understand, but we had to get that deal, and it's a great job, but a great job, Bobby. Good stuff from Parker Poe. Thank you, thank you.
I know it's been a struggle.
Yeah.
Yes, very good. Anyone else have any questions about the contract? In favor of the motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
I don't know if somebody's mic is more crazy here or something.
On the other one, on the thirty five million dollar grant that we got from the state, we've talked about the ordeal we've been through with all that. Well, for us, the legislature came through and took the money back, if you will, and then gave us money out of the general fund of the legislature as opposed to using the federal money. And when the governor signed the budget, it took care of all that. So all those federal procurement rules that were holding us up now are gone away. The other thing is, I talked with Parker Poe about the legislation, the enabling legislation that we had to get this money. We believe that that exempts us from all of the rigmarole that I just went through with Wota Cooper. So I don't have to worry about doing all that and allow them to do some stuff that's not Lytec and so on. And this afternoon, like, I haven't looked at it yet, but I got a copy of the proposed agreement with the folks at Coastal Affordable Housing. He sent that to me, emailed it to me, I don't know, two or three o'clock. I haven't looked at it yet. I know that he and I have been back and forth a bunch of times, and I think we've got it close to final form. But that's one that now we're at a place where we can get that going as well. So that's that's good news for us on both counts, just to let you know where that is. No action for you all to take on that tonight.
And a big thanks to our representatives up in Raleigh.
Sure.
First dog in there.
Are we still held to that twenty twenty four deadline?
No.
We're not?
I don't think there's, I don't think that was in the, this one was.
I don't believe it was in.
I don't think there's any deadline in that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. With that, we would move to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Overman and Commissioner Tobin?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
That'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item fourteen, that's commissioner's business. Commissioner Ross, are you mad kicking it off this evening?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I just have a couple of items. Dorothy, I'm looking over in your direction. Your office produced and released just last week, a few days ago, a terrific short video that summarizes and replays a bit of the work that we had Sandy Pace receive her twenty five year pin today, she and her team with the Special Olympians and the Special Olympics celebration, the kickoff, the launch party, the picnic. It's terrific stuff. It's on YouTube. You just search Derrick County and click on Olympics or Special Olympics, excuse me, and it's about a three or four minute video. And I just thought you all did a fine job. So I want to say thank you and first rate, first rate. Number two, I'm looking at Commissioner Couch. Had the privilege of driving the six hundred and fifty miles down to Cape Hatteras. Oh, sorry, it wasn't, it just felt that way. For Operation Drumbeat, which was the opening of a new exhibit at the graveyard of the Atlantic Museum, sponsored by friends of the graveyard of Atlantic, of the Atlantic Museum, Melanie Schwartz and her husband. I know they're deeply involved with the maritime museums. And it was an outstanding exhibit, which featured a study and reflection on the submarine U-boat warfare off the coast of North Carolina early in World War Two. Artifacts, models, renderings, it was absolutely terrific. And I was really happy to get down there. I know Commissioner Steve House was there. Your wife was there, our register of deeds, and of course, you were there, Danny. So thank you for that. It was a terrific evening, and I really enjoyed it. And lastly, Kay is not here at the moment, but she will be one of the featured speakers at a workshop sponsored by the gentle expert memory care people who deal with memory and other related ailments of seniors in our community. In the state of North Carolina, we have, or sorry, excuse me, in the United States, there are over six million that suffer from dementia and Alzheimer's related ailments. And it's sadly a very widespread illness that touches so many of us. And I would just ask, keep that in mind, on July twentieth at the Bomb Center, two o'clock, there's a workshop. I will be there. I will have a chance to speak and say a few words to the group that assembles there. And I just want to thank Gil Sineso and the Jem people for all their continued effort. And if Kay were here, I would thank her for being one of the speakers. That's all I ask, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Appreciate it. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, two state championships here in Derrick County. That's unreal.
I've heard of that.
That is awesome.
Wow.
Man. Also wanted to put out there, too, this past Friday, the National Suicide Prevention Hotline has changed their phone number, nine eight eight. That is phenomenal. It is a straight hotline that you will actually talk to a counselor. And I can't stress enough how many people have worked on that project to get it to fruition from changing it to a full blown telephone number to just the minimum nine eight eight. I can't say enough of how much that that's, that will help out with suicide preventions across the United States. I'm sure everybody is aware that our North Carolina State Senator, Senator Steinberg, has submitted his resignation for his seat effective July thirty first. And he has asked that our House Representative Bobby Haney to be appointed to his position, which also kind of goes in sides with our day in history. Harry S. Truman signed the Presidential Succession Act in nineteen forty seven on this day. This act revised the older succession act that was passed in seventeen ninety two during George Washington's first term. The original succession act designated the Senate Pro Tem first in line to succeed the president and the vice president. And after that would be the Speaker of the House. In eighteen eighty eight six, President Grover Cleveland removed the Senate President and Speaker of the House from the line of succession. And in his order, would actually put the succession into the cabinet members based on whatever department they were ahead of that was at the time it was put into place, that that particular department. Which raised a lot, lot of controversy as to the fact of then you might possibly have a president that was not an elected official. So Harry S. Truman made it back into the succession to where, but he flipped it from the Senate being the third to the House being the third and the Senate being the fourth. And that was signed into law on this day in nineteen forty seven. And now for our favorite part of any commissioner meeting, meet Rambo.
Our pet of the week for this week is Rambo. This sweet boy is about six months old. He has a ton of energy, which is why he was surrendered to us because his previous family could not keep up with him. Rambo has the best zoomies. He loves playing in the water, digging in the sand, and could go home with children or other animals. If you're interested in Rambo and have another dog, please come by the shelter for a dog meet. To adopt Rambo or foster one of our other animals, you can come visit us Monday through Saturday at our shelter located in Manio. This week, join us at Kitten Palooza this Friday, July fifteenth at PetSmart. For more information, visit our website at www.obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
Rambo looks like a very special puppy who needs a lot of love and a lot of room to run around as it looks from the video. So please, visit the OBX SPCA and give some of their, their pets their forever home. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. I know you and Commissioner Ross have tied to that facility quite a bit. Do you, we have any statistics on on adoptions and stuff? Do they run pretty fast over there for adoption?
They do have full statistics. I do not have them, but they keep them very carefully. And right now, we've got a lot of kittens and a lot of cats. So we need, we need kitten and cat adoptions. We're pretty good on the dogs, but right now, yeah.
Kittens and cats, like you said, they're, they're harder.
We got a report today.
Oh, wow.
I don't know if we sent it out to you all yet, but I will.
Okay, just curious, just curious.
Oh, for God's sake.
Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Chairman.
Good God.
Glad to offer to have a congratulations to our certain recipients, Sandy Salat, Alicia Wild, and Kerry for their one hundred years of service to Derrick County.
Another century of work.
Another, another century, exactly. Fantastic. And to our employer, the Montacre Styren. You know, again, we say it every time, we couldn't, this county couldn't operate without you. Thank you so much. Also extend, join everyone in extending our congratulations once again to the two softball teams that were state champions. That's, that's pretty damn special. Last, well, not last Friday, but Friday, July the eighth, we had a conference call with regard to the pediatric telepsych that we support through Surf Pediatrics. On the call were Dr. Sheila Davies, who's our Director of Department of Health and Human Services, Dr. Lang and Dr. Said, who are in the psychiatric department for ECU Med, Dr. Christian Legay, who owns Surf Pediatrics, and myself. And basically, this was with regard to the upcoming retirement of Dr. Diamond, who has been the doctor who has spent the time doing the telepsych work for the, for the kids there at Surf Pediatrics. We felt that it was imperative to have a seamless exchange with no gaps in the service for those kids. And we, we think that ECU has a really good plan to do this. And it will be accomplished either by Dr. Diamond continuing to do this work even as he is retired, kind of give him something to do, you might say. He has to get that approved through upper management at home, but hopefully, hopefully that can happen. And if not, they have another doctor who has said if Dr. Diamond can't do it, he would step in and fill in. So we feel like that that is going to be a seamless transition there, which is very important. This past Tuesday, Roxanna Ballinger and myself with, of the Saving Lives Task Force, made a presentation to the Kill Devil Hills Rotary. They have our first chance to do that in like two or three years as a result of COVID restrictions and things like that. But they've always expressed an interest in knowing what's going on with that. So we gave them a, a presentation for about an hour and had a, had a really good meeting with them. A lot of questions that they had about what's going on in the county regarding substance abuse. And other than that, hope everyone had a terrific Fourth of July, and I look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Mr. Bat? Yes, sir. I guess folks have heard about down, down south on Highway twelve, we had a seven year old kid was hit by a car. And then yesterday, a fifty four year old man was struck and killed by a car also, and him and his dog. And so I can tell you that in the town of Kitty Hawk, they have crosswalks there. Sort of a hills hasm, they have them in Duck. Some are automated, some are not automated. Some have been funded by DOT. And so what I'd like to propose is maybe have the county manager come up with a resolution to aggressively pursue Department of Transportation to put crosswalks in areas down there, down south. It's in county area, and I think we really need those to help out.
Do you know anything of the details of the seven year old?
I do not, Andy, do you?
Yeah, there, she was unsupervised.
Well, that's what I was, when I heard. I have a six year old grandson, and the concept of a six year old grandson unsupervised, walking around or crossing that street with no one around is inconceivable to me. So I was trying to fathom how a seven year old was in the street in the first place. And you've answered my question.
I will tell you, the crosswalks that I've seen that taking place in Kitty Hawk, for instance, that they, they do a good job. Although it does encourage people to walk across and to also know and think possibly that you're just going to stop, and they can keep on walking on their self confidence and walk right in front of traffic. So we all got to be aware.
I've seen many instances of motorists who do stop. They, they see people at this, and they'll stop in the crosswalk, at least going up and down between Nagsette and Kill Devil Hills. I see that all the time.
And also what you don't realize, too, is on, on Highway twelve at a crosswalk, you are required by state law.
That's right, to stop. That's right. That's right, and I see it.
Well, let's get some crosswalks down there.
Were these accidents at intersections or are they just random places? I'm trying to figure out where are we asking them to put crosswalks?
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I know that some of the people I would talk to, Canadian Hole was one place that they would like to have them. Other is right down at the, the P Island, not P Island, but where the ranger station is right there.
Well, Road Dante is.
Yeah, Road Dante, yeah. It's known, and then, and then down in Hatteras Village.
I, I, if you want a resolution or whatever, a letter written, I'm happy to sign it and send to NC DOT whatever we can to encourage.
Bobby, what do you suggest?
I think a letter is fine. It doesn't, I think, and we'll go, if you'd like, I'll get up with DOT and find out what we need to make that move. If they need a resolution, then you'll authorize that. If you need a letter, I don't know if they got to go do with traffic. So I don't know what it takes, but we'll try to get that process moving.
Bobby, please include in that that these crosswalks have electronic signage that has the lights that go around the sign, that be the flash or, I don't know what they do. It may go around a circle.
There are, as you know, there's a couple of types, there's that type that they have. I know in Southern Shores and Duck, they have them that they're lit, they're crosswalks, and they're marked, and you're supposed to stop if somebody's there waiting to cross. They don't have a stoplight there, though. And so there are those kind of stoplights. Where you're talking about, they have stoplights, and there aren't a whole lot of stoplights.
No, I'm not talking about stoplights. I'm talking about the sign itself when the, at pedestrian crosswalk. I'm talking about the sign itself when the, at pedestrian crosswalk. It's lighted and around the sign and it either flashes or the.
Oh, yeah, that's what they.
Yeah.
It's like they have a little bridge.
Yeah, they have, right.
But you know, when.
There's, there's the kind of flash, like I said, around the sign and like the ones at Southern Shores, they've got LED lights.
Right.
At night, the sign onto the crosswalks.
Okay. I mean, these folks that are on, I mean, and, and I don't see in fairness, but in reality, these folks that are down here on vacation and driving, their mind ain't on that. They, they, they ain't thinking about folks crossing the road in front of them. They're talking to people in the cars and they're on vacation, having a good time. And it's the last thing they're thinking about. And if they don't have something visually to wake them up.
In Southern Shores on Highway 12, if you're down there along Skyline Drive down that way where they are, you're going to have some courage to step out in the walk and hope everybody stops. I mean, because there's no stoplight there, so you're counting on them to.
Be nice.
To stop. And so you got to kind of wait, even, even with the crosswalk.
Exactly. We don't need any more for that.
Commissioner Bateman, on another issue related quite to that, that's very disturbing. And I don't know that there's anything that we could do about it unless public information can put a notice or something on our site. Every single week for the last two months, on the way to work, at least one day a week, somebody is crossing the bypass, not at an intersection where a light is, but walking. Every single week I see for the last two months, I have seen somebody somewhere between Milepost 6 is where I am to my office in Southern Shores. Somebody is crossing that highway every, at least, I see it at least once a week.
Standing in the turn.
Standing in the middle, listen. The other morning, I saw a guy riding his bicycle facing me in the center lane.
Saw that too.
In the center lane.
I always stop.
Oh, well, I get way over and, and I beat my horn and, and blink, blink my light, hit my.
Flashes.
Flashes on my vehicle and beat my horn. I, I don't understand people attempting to do that. It's, it's, but I see it, I have seen it every single, at least once a week for the last two months.
I agree. It's crazy.
Danny, I'm sorry, I just had to get that out. I don't know that there's anything we can do about it to make people aware that it's way too dangerous to do that. If you're going to do it, do it at a stoplight, you know? You can't fix it, but anyway.
Can you get a motion to authorize either a resolution or a letter, whatever DOT needs?
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to add something up. I was, we've been having this discussion about the crosswalks and just the amount of traffic. And yes, this has been specific to Hatters Island here in this discussion, but it is germane to the Outer Banks as a whole. But I was approached by a guy with the Frisco Volunteer Fire Department. And he said he would be willing to help initiate a community safety program, just an awareness thing, whether it is something that is coordinated with rental companies, whether it's a website, whether it's in conjunction with Dare County, with Dorothy's staff. But that, that's probably something that we could consider as a, as a nugget as we continue to educate people about the safety implications of, of, you know, we don't want any more of this. I mean, we were talking about kids and the larger story on the gentleman and his dog yesterday that was run over. There was a story of.
Where did that take place, Danny?
In Frank, in front of Frank and Franz.
No, I don't mean that. Buxton, Frisco?
Oh, Avon.
Avon, sorry.
Well, there was a dog, there was a dog running loose and the kids were chasing the dog and the dog would cross the road. I mean, this is at a check-in time. I mean, everybody's ready to get in their cottage between four and six, so the traffic is just nonstop. But I think there's some, and Bobby, if, if we need to, if, if I need to get in touch with this gentleman, he had some really good ideas and none of it is.
If you can hook him up with Drew, then Drew can do it and connect the other fire chiefs.
He knows Drew.
Down there and together they can create that task force or whatever.
Community safety program.
Community safety program, yeah.
So Bobby, you say you do need a motion or?
Yeah, I think they need to do it in case we have to do a resolution.
Okay.
You've approved it.
Okay, all right. Make the motion.
Second.
It's been made by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by a vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous. Commissioner Bateman, anything else?
The last thing I got is just a Sneed story. So Mr. Sneed was, you know, he was a friend of mine and he was a customer for many, many years. And I had to take one of my employees over to him to get his driver's license. And we were sitting in the little room at Storm, you couldn't see the examiners in the back. And there was a little 15-year-old, 16-year-old kid beside my employee. And they were talking, and the guy said, I don't think he's here. I don't think he's here, you know? And I'm like, I certainly hope he's not. He's the toughest one here, you know? No, he's not here, good. And the next thing I know, you heard Sneed, Richardson, come on back. And the guy said, it's him, it's him. He was scared to death of the guy. And so I told Mr. Sneed the story when he came in Friday night for dinner. And he said, you know what? He said, I've got to have that persona to the kids. He said, because I'm the one that possibly can save their life. He said, you know, I've had people come in here and I need to make sure they're serious. And they understand that what they're dealing with is very, very important. And he had a lot of people that kept driver's licenses. They were scared to death of it. He had a big, gruff voice, you know? That's all I got, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Thank you. Commissioner Cal?
Yeah, I just want to follow that up with a story about Sneed was our driver safety guy down in Hatters too when we were in high school. But we also had Charles Minton. And I remember the girl that I was in driver's ed with, she got to go first. And I'd been driving anyway since I was 14, a lot of sadder. But the girl reached up to the driver examiner and said, all right, what are you, first thing you do? You adjust your rearview mirror. He said, well, go ahead and do it. So she reached up there to touch that mirror and her hand was just shaking. And I don't want to say exactly what he said, but he said, calm down, you're nervous as a dog going to the bathroom on a briar. And I busted out laughing and he turned around and shot me a glance and then I had to get up there. And first thing he did, we're going down the road and I was all confident and cocky and everything, he said, turn here. So whipped in there and it was a one, went the wrong way on a one. He, he, yeah, it's, we've had some characters here, getting kids to drive. Rob, thank you for bringing up the World War II. Have just two people down there who were interviewed about their experiences during World War II. And I know several months ago, this was back around Christmas time and we were concerned about Carol Dillon, who, the older Carol Dillon, she's one of the great ladies of the Outer Banks and we just didn't know. I mean, the doctors had sent her home. Well, she's proven the doctors wrong. She wanted her bags and she wanted to get out there. She's got a pacemaker now, she's got her color back, but she was the basis of the book. She, she told the Voice of America reporter about her experiences. It was a book called Taffy of Torpedo Junction. And this was a young Carol Dillon at age 13, she had a horse, Banker Pony named Ivy. And she managed to tip off the FBI of a German spy, a German World War II operative. And it was a great story and she told this story to the VOA person. So I hope when, when it comes out, this report was based in California, but it was just an amazing story. We, we had such a front row seat for World War II there. And I'm just glad she's doing really well because she's just full of pictures. And so I was in there helping the questions to be asked. So they gave the book Taffy of Torpedo Junction to Mrs. Dillon and asked her to sign it. And she looked up for a minute and then she signed it and she said, I'm the real Taffy, Carol White Dillon. And, but thank you everyone for bringing it up because that's really the only thing I had for my commissioner's business. Very busy down in Hatters and, you know, it's a good thing. People are coming to us because they want to come, get away from it all, and we're happy to do that. But safety has to be first and we can find a way to reinforce the fact that, yes, we want you to have a good time, but we want you to make sure that you're safe while you're here. So thanks for bringing that up. That kind of took, took some of what I was going to talk about. Last thing, beach nourishment, coastal storm resiliency is the better word. But it's amazing to see, it, it is going really well, I think, in terms of Hatters. We've had some news come out today, but this is going to be a raging success story. And this is one of the, about the only significant thing we can do relative to protecting infrastructure and protecting just our economy is what it is. But we do such a good job at it. It's hard for, you know, the county and to step back and all of us who are involved in, in, in community affairs and county government to step back and see how really well we really do this. Yeah, it's just, I think the year 2022 is going to be something that we're going to be remembered for in terms of some very successful beach projects. I, I couldn't be, it is going so fast that in being done, it's being done fast and it's being done efficiently and effectively. And it's an amazing thing to see. They're going to be out of here. They're going to be out of here really soon.
Thank heavens, Mother Nature is cooperative.
Well, as we know, it's, it's, it's a challenge and it's, it's a high-energy environment. But, you know, every five years, if you can just, as long as we can maintain this program, as long as we can hold on until the next project starts. But the borrow area off of Avon, Dave and Dustin and Bobby, we've got another meeting coming up on Wednesday. But we're encouraged about the borrow area off of Avon. It ought to be good for at least that one particular site ought to be good for one, possibly two more projects. And Bobby had a good point about let's, let's go ahead and start looking now, just so that we can plan going forward. But it's, it's a good thing to watch, fun thing to watch. It's almost like it's something else to do on Hatters. Go out there and watch this symphony of bulldozers moving the sand around. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Should we be charging admission to watch that?
Commissioner Tobin?
Okay, as I spoke about in the meeting, CAC reentry training is on July 26th in Terrell County at the Colombian Senior Center. In the notification letter that I received on that, Brandy is the Alms Budsmen for this area and she turned in her resignation.
What?
So it's a good news, bad news thing. She, she was a very, very good person. Jasmine's going to be the one presenting the training, but Brandy's going to be there also. I believe the 31st is her last day, so we're losing a good person. But, you know, and they were talking about having more Alms Budsmens in that presentation. Instead, we're losing one. So anyway, that's that. More bad news, the dredge delivery has been delayed another couple of weeks to July 29th. The motors that were supplied to run the actual dredge pumps were underpowered. They, they had sent the wrong motors, so they have been replaced. But the DQM system, which is the dredge quality management system, has to be installed, reinstalled on these new motors and recalibrated. And unfortunately, the person who does that's on another job this week, so he won't be able to be back till next week. So anyway, the 29th is when it's scheduled for delivery now. We, Bobby, myself, Steve, we're traveling down there tomorrow to do one of the sea trials on it. Other than that, along with dredging, the inlet's in horrible shape and getting worse as we speak every day. I have been working with Congressman Murphy, Senator Tillis and Senator Burr, and also Congressman Whitman out of Virginia and putting some pressure on the Corps. And I've been talking to Colonel Bennett about twice a week on what we can do. And this morning, he issued a signed emergency or letter of emergency to DEQ to get emergency authorization to do some dredging on a little interior channel that we've been trying to get him to do here for the past six to eight weeks. Colonel Bennett said he's never been denied one, but we're trying to get it. He's pretty sure we'll get the initial dredging for it, but we're trying to get it so it will last until the full authorization of dredging that channel is accepted, which is a nine to 10-month project. So hopefully that'll be done here. We'll be able to get the snow in here in the next week to 10 days, but time will tell. It's bureaucracy at its best.
Party that never ends is.
So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobin.
And congratulations to those young girls. I mean, that is just unbelievable.
Really is.
Accomplished.
I've got one other item under commissioner's business. I hated to do this to Cheryl because we're going over the agenda and approving items for the agenda. She worked herself to death last week and I hated to do it a fourth time to ask her to redo it. I said, I'll just, I'll bring it up on the commissioner's business. But the ABC board, Ray White has asked to be replaced on that board. He's been on that board for quite a number of years and it's, I hate to see him go, but he's.
He did an excellent job. He's got an excellent job.
He has that. He's been asked to be replaced. I would like to move that, make a motion that we appoint Phil Scarborough, who's been on that board for a good while as well. He's most knowledgeable, just as much as Ray was. And matter of fact, he spearheaded the project in Hatters for the, for the new ABC store down there.
You want a motion?
So, yes, I'd like to, well, I, yeah, I'd like a motion to appoint him as the chair.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor then.
Second.
Commissioner Cal has been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous. We also provided y'all with some applications to appoint a new board member to replace Ray White. And I think y'all have copies of those and I'd like a motion to replace him.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to replace them with Bee Bass Knight.
Okay.
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobin, to replace Ray White on that board by Ms. Bee Bass Knight. Bass Knight's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you all, gentlemen. Sorry I brought that up, had to bring that up late, but I hated to do that to Cheryl for a fourth time.
Couldn't do it, Cheryl. Couldn't do it.
With that being said, county manager?
Yes, sir, just one thing. NC Cooper of Extension is working to create a coastal North Carolina Food Council in, for the counties of Camden, Chalons, Kurutuck, Daregates, Pasquetank, and Quimmins. They've asked us to appoint somebody and has suggested that our director, Tanya Lamoe, be the person that we appoint. And so I'm asking you all to appoint her. She has expressed interest in the position and is the logical choice.
Need a motion to do so?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Bateman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman Overman and Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous.
That's all I have.
Thank you, county manager. Our public information officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us this evening?
You all were mentioning the safety, the bypass Highway 12 safety, and it is something that continues to come up. I know our Government and Education Access Committee, which Vice Chairman Overman serves on, that's something that they stressed, that we try to develop some public service announcements and such. And we are doing that. In fact, I think our channels manager worked with Kill Devil Hills and it's, it's pretty poignant. It's, we'll be releasing it in the next couple of weeks, but I think we, I think we can be effective. The key, which, which the county manager mentioned was, you know, have this gentleman work with Drew because we can be most effective when we work with the towns and with the emergency services so that we're all delivering the same message. services so that we're all delivering the same message. We can work together to do some key messages and kind of drive those home. It's kind of like with More Beach to Love, where we're working with the towns, and then also the Love the Beach, Respect the Ocean. We've made great strides working with emergency management and with the towns to really hit home the safety on the beach messaging. So y'all have probably seen that. But we will, we'll work with those we need to work with to try to do some effective, put together some sort of campaign. I don't think it'll work for this season, because it'll take some time, but definitely for the future.
Great, well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Dorothy? Financial Director, Mr. Clausen, do you have anything else this evening?
No, sir, just what Commissioner Cal said, the beach nourishment projects are going very well.
Yeah, pretty awesome. To, when you're out and about and you're going out to eat, or you're visiting places and stuff, and you hear people talking about it. It's pretty awesome. So, thank you. Well, then we need a motion to adjourn until August the 1st. Okay, Commissioner Tobin's made that motion, is seconded by Commissioner House.
Routine.
All right. I want to raise a concern about the frequency of motions and seconds.
Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sent?
I'm having a motion to back off the intensity of the line.